We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Lowe, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Members of our heads, dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity once again to do city business and to do it the right way. We ask that you guide our minds, our tongues, and our hearts to lead the city in the right direction. We ask that you put your arms of protection around every city official and our mayor. In your name, in the Christ's name, Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Niefer, Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. There are no public hearings this evening. A privilege of the floor, Christine Pleva, with the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Thank you so much for letting me come tonight, as I do annually, every February, to give you an update on tourism in Lima, Allen County, and let you know how tourism fared in our community the last year. It's a pleasure being here tonight, not just to be able to tell you about things that went on, but to let you know it was a very, very successful year for tourism last year. All in all, tourism in Allen County in 2012 was up 9.9 percent in this community, but within the city limits, the hotels that are in the city of Lima, they were up 10.4 percent in terms of lodging tax collected, which is our barometer of the number of people staying in hotels. So it was a very, very positive year. Our job at the CBB is to promote this community as a destination for visitors to come. We are indeed marketers of this community. And as such, one of our roles is to record all of the groups that we work with and the groups coming into the community. Those groups being comprised of things like conventions, conferences, business meetings, trade shows, exhibits, motor coach tours, et cetera. And I am happy to report that we had a record number of groups coming into the community in 2012. We recorded 943 groups coming into this community, having events here in 2012. The estimated attendance of these groups was nearly 292,000 people, and they generated $47.7 million for the community. The number of groups was a 14 percent increase over 2011. The dollars generated was a 9.7 percent increase, and the estimate, or excuse me, the 9.7 percent increase was the attendance, and dollars generated was a 12.2 percent increase. So everything, in every category, went up in 2012, which we were very happy to see. We participated, you know, with a lot of other organizations in this community to try to work to get companies and organizations and groups to hold meetings and events here. We recorded 35 conventions taking place in Lima this last year. Those conventions generated $3.8 million. A lot of those conventions people may not hear about because they're closed conventions. They're the conventions for particular membership or things like that, so they're not open to the public. But we did indeed record 35 of those having their events in this community, and that was a 16 percent increase over 2011. We also recorded 185 special events coming into this community. Those are everything from races to kennel club dog shows to wedding receptions that bring people into the community and have people stay at hotels. That was a 30, excuse me, a 17 percent increase over the previous year, but those 185 events generated $34.9 million. So those are things we strive to continue for the next year and future years to get those types of events coming into town. The number of meetings increased 18.6 percent last year. And a smaller group, that being those groups of reunions, family reunions that brought people into town to put them in hotels, as well as military reunions we worked with, that was a 45 percent increase in the number of reunions held here. Though they were smaller groups, those reunions still generated $473,000 for the community. So we were happy about that. In 2012, we had noted 30 new, larger events that had come here that had never been here before. So our goal of trying to get new groups to come into town, as well as retain previous groups, you know, we still worked very hard at that. So we're happy to see that was successful. In 2011, we had 27 new groups that had come here that had never been here before. So 57 groups in two years, we were very, very happy with, and we wanted to share that with you. In your booklets that I have given you, in your reports, there are a number of pages in here detailing the strategies of what we do to market this community and how we spend the dollars we receive, which is pure lodging tax dollars, in order to promote this community and follow our mission. So all of the data that I have given to you is in that booklet. But some of the things we did that I wanted to take special note of was the fact that we attended or exhibited materials at over 25 conferences across the country in 2012. The majority of those were in surrounding states and in Toronto. We're getting a good return on investment of going or sending materials to those kinds of events. We also kept a very strong presence in advertising. We advertise in a number of regional, state, and national publications. We advertised in over 127 publications, which are all listed in your report for you, so you can see where we placed our advertising dollars. In the top four publications that we did, those being in the region, Long Weekends Magazine, Ohio Magazines, magazines that deal with recreation and tourism, four of those top magazines alone have a reader response card, which allows us to track people who are interested in coming to this community because they fill it out and send it and want more information. This last year, of those four magazines, we processed 801 requests for information and response to just those ads. So we were, again, very pleased with that. We also did something a little different this year, is we really work each year on changing and updating our website. And what we did this last April was we totally gave our website a facelift. We changed our web hosting and our tracking. And so we were able to get a lot more information when we did this last April. And I can tell you, from April until December 31st, our website logged 2.37 million information requests, and we had 1.4 million pages viewed on our site for people wanting information on Allen County and events going on here. So we'll be able to track that as we continue forward. Again, there's so much information in your books, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think I could probably go on and on and on. I know you have a busy agenda tonight, but if there's any information I could ever provide to any of you, or any questions I could ever answer now or otherwise, please do let me know.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I just have one question there. How does the rebate program work? When you bring a convention center, I might be saying it different, or it's like...
Do you mean like a grant?
Yes. Now, I call it rebate.
Right.
Okay. How does that go? When you bring a convention here, and you guys, you keep your receipts, and you guys reimburse back?
No, no. What we do, when we have, we have a program that is retention grant program.
Okay.
And it is for the large groups, especially large events, that come into this community from out of town, that come here year after year. Now, the caveat to that is it has to be an event that has an option of holding their event anywhere else, but we want them to come to Lima. So it can't be something like a local festival, for example. Those kind of things we do support by sponsorships and funding things like certain advertising and that type of thing. But the retention grant are for those larger groups that come into town. And what we do is make each of those event organizers fill out an application. And those applications, we go through that process of verifying that. We have to prove, yes, the event did take place, it had the certain number of people that they said were coming into town, that they did use a certain number of hotel rooms, et cetera. And then it is up to our Board of Trustees to determine, of that pool of money we put each year into a retention grant, what money goes back to those event organizers. Okay? Now, also, the thing that's really important to note in that grant program is that we maintain that if we give an organization grant money, that grant money must be spent in Allen County.
Right.
So we have to, you know, they have to sign and verify that, yes, they're going to use this money towards their advertising that they may pay for here. Those kinds of things. So that's one thing. We do insist that the dollars stay here.
Correct.
But if that's what you were referring to, that's the retention grant program.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Any other questions, Congress? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Moving on to the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that item A on the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and item B be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A, and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a new permit for Old City Prime at 215 South Main Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number one be received and filed, and the clerk authorize to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one, and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
I will be abstaining as the applicant is my brother-in-law.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining?
Aye.
The motion carries. Sorry, I had to make sure we had... Communication number two.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a transfer of stock to certified at 513 South Prime Street.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number two be received and filed, and the clerk authorize to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two, and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Yes, when I received this, I made a few phone calls. One, this is a transfer of stock, not a renewal of a license. And had a conversation with our law director, Mr. Geiger, for that explanation. And then I put a call in, and I'd like to, if I could, Mr. President, call Major Protsman up at this time to expand on, hopefully, what will occur after this process is approved by the division, Ohio Division of Liquor Control, by the LPD.
After our conversation that we had, we did contact the gentleman who is requesting the transfer. He is very open to meeting with us. If you'd like to be part of that meeting, you're certainly welcome. Do the same thing we do with other problem areas that we have. Sit down and give some suggestions, talk about the expectations that we will have, and then ask them what they need from us to help them be successful. So that's where we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Major. And yes, I would like to be at that table.
I will let you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? I just want to point out, and Ms. Adams, I know that you had raised this concern. There have been some problems there. But just to clarify, this is simply a transfer of stock ownership, not a renewal. It's a simple transfer. And I know that it's just an area that there have been some problems in the past, and I think that's why Major Protsman is getting involved, and I think it's why you've raised the concern. So I just want to clarify that for anybody who might be wondering, gee, why are they just passing this through? It's simply a stock transfer that has to come before us. It's not a review of the establishment or the problems associated with, so...
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Creative Microsystems Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number three, receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda. Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place taxes to assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to execute an LPA agreement with ODOT for the bike path project.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number five be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
If I could, Mr. Elstro, I read yesterday's paper for the meeting today. They highlighted this and the next communication on the bike paths. Under this process, we will have some public hearings on this, a review of the plans once they're developed.
Mr. President. Mr. Elstro.
Counselor Adams, what this action is, is to allow us to enter into an administrative contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation, so that our staff can execute the terms of the contract, oversee the planning, construction of Phase Five Bike Way. The project is slated to actually be constructed in 2014. We are still in the planning stage. We do have preliminary designs. I believe we have had one meeting of public input. I anticipate that we will have another meeting for public input when the plans get closer to being finalized. So I hope you... Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to execute an LPA agreement with ODOT for the all WWTP project.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number six be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for the 2013 budget.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Utilities requesting permission to dispose of old PCs and printers.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed, and that the law director be authorized for preparing necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight, and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Reports of officials, Veronica...
McLaurin.
McLaurin, regarding the Lacknep Home Ownership Report.
It's a group effort.
Yes, it's a group effort. Thank you, counsel, for having us here. I just want to comment, Jesse Lowe, let me know that I only have five minutes, so I'm going to use every bit of 15 minutes, Jesse, to do this presentation. Thank you for having us again and coming. Pass these out to counsel. We'll be very brief, actually, just in updating you on some of the outcomes of the homeownership program there at Lacknep. We firmly believe that if we have those that offer an investment, we would like to let you know what your return on your investment has been for the program year. Number one thing that we set out to do last year, one of our goals that we said we would accomplish, is becoming a HUD certified counseling agency. Much hard work. We did become a HUD certified counseling agency December 13th, 2012. This was a very difficult process, and HUD does a very good job assuring that the individuals that are receiving housing counseling from our organization are getting quality housing counseling. So we are still pursuing to maintain this. This means we attend trainings several times a year, all over the country. So it's just actually exciting to be able to travel like that. Funding for these trainings comes from the Ohio Housing Foundation. A couple of other goals that we met, Amy's going to comment on some of our last year's goals. I brought the current goals that we've met. We've sold three homes so far of 16. We have nine already that are in contract of 16 homes. So we're pretty excited about $130,000 worth of real estate value added to the community so far, and we do plan to complete the remainder of the 16 homes before the end of the grant year. A couple of other things, if you look through here, just on some of the other achieved goals, again, our HUD certification. If you look in the past five years, we've sold 142 homes. Forty-five of them are still in their homes. Seven of them are owned, but they're not living in those homes. Overall, we have a 4 percent foreclosure rate. We still sit at a 96 retention rate, and the total housing value is pretty high, as you see here. We're really moving right along. Our partnerships are still consistent in the same. We're going to continue with our foreclosure prevention workshop, and this is with a sheriff, a lending professional, and a lender that comes into the program and assists us with these classes. We will also continue with our home maintenance class that we offer with Barb Massa of New Lima. They do a fabulous job training participants and individuals on the importance of maintaining their homes, keeping the homeowners up with quality home repair. We also offer some home repair tips there at Lacknep with our own board member and maintenance individual. And Connie Hall even puts her hand in a little bit on drywalling. We also will continue to offer our financial literacy class. Now, we're seeking other funding to maintain this, but we have found that it is an awesome asset to the program. 172 participants have taken this class since 2009. Of 172 folks that were turned away because they didn't have a quality credit score, didn't have quality income, their debt-to-income ratio was off, 17 of them have purchased their home through this financial literacy program. So we do want to continue to offer this program and add to the community. As you see, a couple of the pictures have been updated. We still push the homeowner to stay committed, to partner with consistency and their family members, and we have a couple of the individuals that have purchased their homes here tonight to talk. We believe they are the best ones to tell the success story, and Connie Hall will introduce them and tell you a little bit more about programmatic changes.
Hi, I'm Connie. I've met quite a few of you last time I was in here, and I jabber a lot, but I'm not going to do it tonight. With our homeownership people, we have... Excuse me, I miss my voice now. We brought two of us with, two of them with us through our classes. We've started that, a lot of people now are getting into our homeownership program, and they're just, they're saying they don't want to rush into it, which I think that is great because for a while there, we had people just jumping in, not learning anything in the classes, and then, you know, buying their homes. Which now, we got people that are coming into the program, and they want to learn step by step on what they got to do, how to take care of your home after you're done. This is Emily Bowser. She had purchased last year, or last spring, and this is Avery Hatton. We're just going to have them say a little bit real quick on their experience.
Hello. Last spring, I took the classes in the homeownership from Lacknep, and I think I really learned a lot in those classes. I learned not only the steps to buy a home, but I also learned how to take care of it once I did buy it. Before I took the classes, I knew I wanted to be a homeowner, but I didn't know exactly what it was going to take, and I didn't think it was feasible. But taking the classes, I learned a lot, and it helped with my down payment. So without the classes, I wouldn't have been able to do it. So I think it's one of my biggest accomplishments that I've been able to purchase a home, and I know the program's been around for a long time, so I'd love to see it keep going and have more homeowners in Lima. Thank you.
I'm pretty much the same way with her. Being a single woman, it is kind of hard when you're first buying a home. You don't know what the steps are that you have to get into. With the classes, it gave me the information I needed to be able to know what to look forward to when I did buy my home. I took my classes in the spring. I didn't get my house until the first of this year, but I'm glad I took it then because it gave me all that time to be able to look and find the perfect house for me. The money did help me out a lot, that they were able to help me with the down payment, or I wouldn't have been able to do this either. And it's a great class. I recommend it for, I've already told a lot of people about it. I think it's an awesome opportunity for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We look forward to selling more homes because welcome home money is in, and the participants are really pouring in through the programs. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Before you take off, Veronica.
Mr. President. Where does CHIP?
Amy could probably answer that a little bit better for you.
The CHIP of council, council members, CHIP is not funds that we receive. CHIP is county money. This program is funded with home dollars. The counseling portion actually is funded with CDPG, but the dollars that are used for down payment assistance are home dollars. CHIP dollars are dollars that the county provides for homeowner assistance. In some cases, when the city has run out of our funds, they've been able to fund some homeowners within the city of Lima. So we don't, that's not our money.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Was CHIP started with Katria?
No.
It wasn't? Okay, I thought...
CHIP is just another flavor of money that comes from HUD. CHIP only goes to non-entitlement communities. It's the same thing as home dollars, but when it's out in the county, it's called CHIP money.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could make one comment, I want to thank them for coming today. The information they've given you is about the current program year, and again, you always have to get your head around, there's a difference between a calendar year and a program year. I just wanted to comment that last program year, which ran from October 1 of '11 to September 30 of 2012, there were 22 homes sold, and the down payment assistance was about $202,000. That down payment assistance in return was six times increased for housing mortgages. 1.296 in million dollars, meaning almost $1.3 million of mortgages were issued based on that $202,000 we provided in down payment assistance. So you turn that money six times. I think that was an excellent investment for our community, and I want to thank counsel for supporting that.
Thank you. Next, on reports of officials, Major Protsman.
The purpose for me being here tonight is to give you an update for the enforcement actions that the police department has taken on the vicious dog ordinance. As you recall, back in June of 2011, council voted to change that particular ordinance. Before the change, it was a fourth degree misdemeanor, meaning that if the officers caught the person doing a violation, they would have to take that person into custody. This caused some problems for the officers because they'd have to take control of the dog and then make arrangements to have the dog go someplace while they took the person to the police department. With the change that you voted for back in June of 2011, it made the ordinance a minor misdemeanor with a $150 fine, meaning that the officers could simply write a citation for their violation and not take the person into physical custody. The hope was, with it making it easier for the officers to do the enforcement action, and with the $150 fine, that it would be more of a deterrent. If you look at the package you got, the first page shows that enforcement action. The top graph is enforcement action for 2011. The blue bar, the first one, is the, about the first five months of the year, which was before the change was made. As you can see, we made one arrest during that time. The next bar is the citations that we wrote after the change, and as you can see, 73 were issued in 2011 at that time. I wanted to look at a bigger time span, however, and if you look at the chart below, it's been about a year and eight months since that change was made, so I went back and looked at a year and eight months prior to the change, and as you can see, we only made four arrests at that time. But since the change, we've made 130, or we've issued 131 citations. So, I guess the question is, is this, is this having any effect for the issue that we're trying to solve? And if you look at the next page, there's two more charts, and it says animal bites and dogs at large car, or dogs at large calls for service. Our computers, the way we enter our calls, we can't differentiate between if someone's calling about a dog just running around, or if somebody actually got bit, so that's why you have both of these in front of you. The top chart shows 2011 and 2012. The first blue bar of 100 calls for service was what we received before the change was made. The 163 calls was for 2011, the second half, after the change was made. And then the third bar, 230, are the amount of calls for service that we received in 2012. So, actually, our calls for service dropped from 2011 to 2012. However, if you look at the bottom chart, I went back again in that year and eight-month period, and you can see that prior to the change, there were 279 calls for service, as opposed to 416 calls for service after the change was made. The hope is, is that with the change and with the media releases that we were doing, people saw that this was a concern the council and the police department had, and they were more willing to call when they saw violations. That's what we're hoping, hopefully, is going on. The final page deals with the health department and the dog bite investigations that they did. The top chart is for the city of Lima, and the bottom chart is for Allen County as a whole. In 2009, I did not get the numbers for the county, but I do have them for the city. The number that's most interesting is for 2012. You can see that the county's numbers increased by about 50 calls while the cities stayed the same as from 2011 to 2012. Whether or not what we're doing has any influence on that, I don't know. There's not enough data yet to determine that. We'll keep looking back at it, and hopefully, five years or so down the road, we'll be able to tell if we're influencing this or not. Just, just to wrap things up, if I could, I'd just like to go over the current ordinance just briefly to remind the public of what it is. And it's 618-125 for vicious dogs, and that ordinance defines a vicious dog as any dog with a propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack, bite, or cause injury to a human being or domestic animal, or any dog which attacks, bites, causes injury to a human being or domestic animal without provocation. And the third one, and this one's important because it differs from the state, remember we had that about a year ago. Still in the city of Lima, any dog which belongs to the breed that is commonly known as a pit bulldog is still considered a vicious dog within the city of Lima. So, anybody who owns or has possession of that dog must abide by the ordinance, and if they do not, they may be charged with a minor misdemeanor and fined with, for $150. So, it's important that they remember that anybody who cares for or has in their possession a vicious dog within the city limits must be aware of the following. They shall not, shall not permit the dog to be unconfined on the premises where the dog is located, have the dog on a leash no longer than six feet and muzzled when off the premises, not walk or run more than one vicious dog at a time, cannot have a felony conviction, cannot be under the age of 18, no person shall attempt to sell, breed, or buy any vicious dog within the city limits, and any person who owns or possesses a vicious dog must have liability insurance covering vicious dogs of not less than $100,000. Anyone who removes a vicious dog from the premises must carry the proof of liability insurance on their person. And certainly, if anybody has any questions about this ordinance, they're more than welcome to call the police department, and we'll answer their questions for them. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Low. Mr. President, I'd like to thank LPD for what they did this past week with my situation that I was having with the owner who wasn't handling his business property, his business properly. But my question is this, what's the repercussions if the fines aren't paid, or they just ignore what has been?
If the fines are not paid, it'll be up to the court, obviously, not us, but usually, a warrant will be issued for that person.
Max of what, jail time?
They'll be taken into custody by us and then held until they're, until they go in front of a judge or until they post bond.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Is there anybody else?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I want to thank you for the report. This is welcome news to many concerned residents that I serve, and I will be glad to share this in the upcoming neighborhood meetings. And I think the increase in call numbers is that what action the committee did back in June of 2011 gave the people a voice, you know, to make the call, knowing action could be taken with not being encumbered by retaining, you know, in custody and also apprehending the dog. So, I definitely think the word has gotten out, and again, thank you for this.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. I just have one, I guess, comment. Number one, I got more than one comment. First off, thank you for the report. It's, it's kind of nice to see that there's been, I guess, some measurement, okay, tangible measurement of what, you know, our legislative action has allowed you to do and the impact. I guess, and you don't have to answer this right now, but I would throw out there that as you continue to analyze this data, if there are recommendations or things that within that ordinance were not sufficiently addressed, please feel free to bring that back to council for review, or to the law director to bring to us either way. It's actually, as I said, it's kind of neat to see a report on something because that was a pretty heated topic, you know? But by the same token, it's been a heated subject for a long time because your department hasn't had anything with any teeth to it that you can enforce. So, it is kind of neat to see the results, but again, if there's, you can't just sit there, and if there's more that can be done that we need to do to make it better and more enforceable and bring more, more desirable results, let us know.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports, human resources.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everybody has a copy, I believe, of the human resource committee report, and I would move that that report be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is that the human resources committee report be received, filed, and approved. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Finance committee.
Yes, the finance committee, again, all council members have a copy of the committee report. I'm not going to go over the whole thing, which I'm sure you're glad to hear, but just a couple of highlights. We did hold three, we had, we had two public hearings, one on the 22nd of January and one on the 29th, and I'd like to talk about the one on the 29th in just a second. We had three committee meetings to review the budget, the 22nd of January, the 23rd, and the 29th. The interesting thing was the public hearing on the 29th was one of the few times since I've been on council that people actually came and spoke at a public hearing. And most of the discussion was around the issue of an item that was submitted in the budget to maintain the downtown area, not a, not a streetscape maintenance of bricks and mortar, but maintaining the appearance and so forth. We had several business owners downtown Lima who spoke about that issue and the importance of it. And on that issue, what we, what the committee ended up doing was, within the public works department, there was $30,000 set aside that Mr. Elstra will be going back to the public works committee to describe how it would be utilized because it was apparent that there were some obvious synergies available, but it was going to take someone to be the coordinator of the activities in that maintenance effort. So, that is a work in progress. The money was set aside, and the way it was set aside won't be expended until Mr. Elstra makes that contact with the public works committee. The second item that is still an open issue was the issue of the security of this building. And an assignment was given to the administration to come back to the finance committee with recommendations and different options on what can be done to improve the security of this building. That will be a discussion that involves the police department, the public works department, and others, but we would like to see, and what we expect to see, is that there will be different options given and different price tags associated with each so that the finance committee and then ultimately city council can make a final decision on what changes will be made. The third item was one that came up on the last night, and Mr. Nieper is not here tonight, but there, the last couple of years, there's been a discussion relative to Schoonover Pool and what it costs the city to operate Schoonover Pool. And a suggestion was made, which, which the committee agreed to unanimously, to set aside $10,000 to engage a consultant who specializes in municipal swimming pools as to what our current state is and what our options are moving forward to improve the utilization of Schoonover Pool and possibly what it would take to either improve it from a infrastructure standpoint, or, you know, it could go all the way to a discussion on replacing the pool. But that is, but we, would at least have some professionals dealing with the, the public works department to provide that feedback to us. You know, bottom line with the budget, it was, it was a very pleasant discussion this year because of the condition that the city is in with the cash balance carryover of almost $8 million, and the improvements that we've seen in the income, on the income side, income tax, with the economy appearance is heading in the right direction. We will be meeting mid-year to discuss capital expenditures that would total about $2.3 million, which would still leave us about a $5.6 million carryover going into 2014. So, each member of council also received a separate sheet that detailed the, it was a summary of the, summary highlights of the changes that we made during the committee meetings. I appreciate the efforts of Mr. Cleaves and all who participated, department heads and the supporting cast, to answer our questions. They were long meetings, but I think very worthwhile, and I move that this report be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the committee report for the finance committee as stated by Councilor Tevin, as well as submitted in writing. Is there any discussion? Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
You know, I, I sat through most of those meetings, and I would like to thank that committee because they spend a lot of time and effort and explanation, and it was a very, a lot of people did talk, and I appreciate that, and we, we actually made some things happen, moves that even for that cleanup of the downtown that I think is a necessary to keep our city a vital place to come. So, I was appreciative of that committee's efforts, and I wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I too attended the committee meetings, and I would also like to thank the chairman, Councilor Tevin, and committee members, Ms. Councilor Townsend and Councilor Nieper, for their efforts and tedious going through line by line, many of the departments, and where discussion was necessary, it was welcomed and open. And I encourage the citizens in, for next year to attend. This is your tax money, and this is how it's being spent, and I learn something every time I've attended one, better understanding. And again, thank you to the committee for their hard work every year, but especially this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? I just want to, I guess, commend the committee and Chairman Tevin for your work, as well as the rest of council members for your work on the budget. I'd also like to thank Mr. Cleaves, I was somewhere back there. This year was unique in the fact that we had a pretty sizable carryover, and I think that a lot of times, as we've scraped and scrapped over years, debated and argued and discussed the merits of, is a $300,000 carryover a sufficient carryover because that's all we had to work with? It could be easy going into it with an $8 million carryover and just going on a spending spree. And I want to commend the committee, and I want to commend the administration for being judiciously cautious going forward so that we are able to stabilize and remain stable going forward for years to come. There have been some very, very tough years. I'm going to put it at least a decade. But at no time during those years were we in the situation that we saw a lot of other cities in. There weren't blaring headlines of layoffs, of discontinuance of services. We were able to manage and had foresight that as retirements happened, we did it through attrition. We cooled our jets when we had openings and we wanted to hire. So, it's, it's very good, and I think it speaks very well of the responsibility that the committee has taken and that the administration has taken, and I'm hoping that when we do get to the ordinance, that it will pass with unanimous support from council, and then our job begins again, monitoring and going through as we go through the year forward. So, again, congratulations, Chairman Tevin, to you and your committee members, Ms. Townsend and Mr. Nieper, and to all the other members of council who have monitored this and have worked on it. There's a lot more work that goes into it than just the committee meetings that are, that are held. So, again, congratulations. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 3813.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 3813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 3813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 3913 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 3913.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a parking agreement with John Heffey DBA Old City Drive.
Mr. President.
Mr. Low.
I move that ordinance 3913 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 3913 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Abstain.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 4013 has been passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 4013 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 4013 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 4113.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a local public agency agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to enable the city to accept, expend, administer, and draw down funds for the all WWTP project.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 4113 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 4113 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 4113 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 4213.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a local public agency agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to enable the city to accept, expend, administer, and draw down funds for the all Lima Bike Path Phase 5 project.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 4213 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, and the second, is to pass ordinance 4213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 4213 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 4313.
Establishing the budget for the city of Lima for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2013.
Mr. President? Mr. Tevin? I move that ordinance 4313 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, and the second, is to pass ordinance 4313 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 4313 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Miscellaneous business. Mr. Lowe?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin?
Nothing this evening.
Ms. Adams?
Afraid so.
Nothing this evening?
No.
Oh.
No.
Oh.
Few items, not many. I want to remind the members of the committee of the Economic Community Development Committee that back in late November, I had referred to the committee a Whittier Development Update, and the meeting's going to be March 4th, this coming Monday, at 6:00 PM, at the Whittier Development location, for the purpose of an update concerning the development and future What home they pick to have the meeting is left up to the manager of the development, but they'll be prepared. Also, I'm happy to announce the beginning of meetings of the Hope Neighborhood Association will start up again, March 5th, next Tuesday, at 6:30 at Unity. And that usually means spring's not too far behind when they start back up, so I'm looking forward to that. And then finally, Lacknip's Seventh Annual International Expo will be held this weekend, March 2nd, at St. Rita's Auxiliary Center at 718 West Market, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. The admission's free. It's a wonderful event. Looking forward to going to the new venue and seeing how it's laid out and run. And if you have the time, please partake in attending that. It's great for children. They have raffles, crafts, items for sale, bake sale, from different countries, so it's a great event. And finally, I'd like to make mention of all the reports of officials and privilege of the floor tonight from the Visitors Bureau. It was a great, positive evening to hear such positive things about Lima and Allen County. And we're on a roll, and I'd like to see it continue. But, wonderful numbers and efforts, and with LACA and the Home Ownership Program. I have a resident right now that's in line to attend that, and I would like to see that through, hopefully as a success story as well, because what he's dealing with right now as a renter is a nightmare. And I would love to see homeownership personally, having to own a home. I know what it has meant to me, and I appreciate the numbers and your efforts, and the people coming to speak tonight, and what it's done for their lives, their families, stability, and the pride. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, I'm taking all the minutes.
Sorry, not.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess I've got a few things, though. First of all, we're going to have a meeting for the Safety Service Meeting will be held Wednesday at 5:30 at 27:00. And we'll be discussing about the cadet program there. I gave proposals to everyone, and I know I can major chip the prospect one, so we'll be all ready to go, but the meeting will be at 5:30. I want to echo just a little bit what Ms. Adams said. You guys did an excellent job on this program, and I'm very, very supportive of this program. It's great. Keep up the good work. You know, hear a number of good things about what you guys are doing for this program. And I know a lot of folks would not have a home without this program, so I appreciate what Amy continued, looking for money, helping you guys out, you guys working together, and just keep that going. It's great. Also, the visiting bureau, thank you guys so much. That's great news, to hear all that good news there, you know, and hearing the good news when the governor came to town. And so, we had, and Ms. Adams said, we had a win-win this whole month. I hope this dream continue going the whole year. But it's great that we're doing that, the post-report about the dogs, that's a good program there. Also, Hall of Fame, that was great, too, that we've got some good folks in there, and I appreciate all the people that helped me with that. We've been working on that for a year, and got that put together. And we've got a lot of good trailblazers going to keep the direction going. And I have not forgot about the people that we had join in with the sixth ward. So, we're going to make sure everybody involved, you know, we got, yeah, yeah, yeah. Our law director has, he says he's in the sixth ward now, so we got to make sure that he get in our hall one day. But, but it's great, though. I'm excited about it. I had the opportunity to meet a guy, an organization, I went to meet with Amy and the law director before I stopped this, but he wanted to get involved with our housing. He wanted to get involved with the tear-down houses, he wanted to take them over and put people in. His organization wants to. Could it save us a lot of money? Yes, it can, but we must, I need to look at all the rules and regulations first before we jump on that, you know, because when he explained it to me today, it's a great program, that they will come in and take the demolition houses instead of we tearing them down. Says we got to load them, that the Attorney Journal gave us a lot of money, gave us money to tear down. He was saying they'll go in there, fix the house up, get the folks in there, and have them a place to live, you know, and this is a part of why they trying to cut down the homeless. Also, we bring taxpayer money back for property tax and all that. But I want to first check everything out before I come out and say this program will be, is a legit program first, and I want to make sure of that. Also, we got a guy contacting me about towing cars away. He asked that anybody want any car tow in their ward, he definitely take them, you know, I know, we have a junk auto here, I know the procedure, he know the procedures he had to go to before he take a car, but he willing to come out from the van work area to come in and take the cars off our hand at the end of your ward. They causing code enforced problems, they need to be taken out, he willing to come in there and take care of it. And I appreciate, he took six cars out my ward this week, and I appreciate it, appreciate it so much. I was continuing complaining about it, and I understand, now junk car or guys behind a little bit, but he took care of it right away, and I don't know what direction, but he did it the legal way, so we can make sure everything's done right. And again, we have this meeting the 27th. We won't stay long but an hour, though, and we'll get it done, and I hope, Vince, we need all the committee members there on both sides. The human resource need to be there, too. And a lady asked me this past weekend, why don't we take City Council on the road? And I said, that'll be up to our president, City Council, and our body, that we can take it to a different neighborhood association instead of just having it here. You know, they want to see, and I don't know how that goes, and I don't know the law director had to be involved with that, but just like Ms. Adams, taking our committee meeting there, I thought about City Council, you know, and let's take it somewhere else different from here, once a year, and I will talk to the president about that. Thank you.
You want to take it, like, to dolphins, or? We'll work on that. I know that it's a subject that has been discussed in the past.
Right.
And we have to look at some charter considerations also.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Ms. Townsend?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Mr. McLean?
Mr. President, I just want to touch base a little bit. We had a historic event happen last week, and, you know, with our governor coming into our city, and the reception, and the legislation body itself received here in Lima. Certainly hope that it puts us back in a favorable light with them, and I know they had a lot of meetings with our administration, and there was a lot of things discussed that we have talked about in the past, that we would like to see come to the city of Lima, and underpass, overpass on Bell Fountain area and there. I know there was a lot of excitement when it came to our city, and I think we've put ourselves in a very good light. And for everyone that helped with that venue, I want to thank, because they really put on a good, an excellent, excellent event for them. I don't think that I heard any complaints. They were very appreciative of our city. They, they saw the welcome mat when they started inside the city, and it never stopped until they left. So, I think that was one of a great thing that our mayor and our city officials helped with, and all of our Downtown Lima Association, the Civic Center, Allen County Commissioners, whoever else that we could think, I want to thank, because they did an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. That was actually a pretty popular song for those of you, you know, "I Who Have Nothing", it was lyrics to a song, but back in the seventies. However, tonight, I do have a couple of things. Number one, I want to echo Mr. McLean's sentiments, and I think all of the council members have expressed this, maybe not tonight, but at other times since last Tuesday, and that is the congratulations to the administration, the chamber, the Civic Center, the business owners, and everybody who participated in rolling out the gigantic welcome mat to the state legislature, and the cabinet, and various members of the state government that were here last Tuesday. I, actually, it went very well, and there was only, I think, I heard one person in a two-person conversation, and I was the other person in the conversation, who just mentioned the fact that it was, you know, the coldest day of the year. So, I mean, it was, well, it went off well enough that everybody kind of forgot about the weather that day. And I also, I would be remiss if I didn't also publicly thank Representative Huffman, who I know had a huge hand in helping coordinate all of the events that went on, leading up to and including last Tuesday. Somebody characterized it as a home run, and I'd have to disagree. I think it was a walk-off grand slam home run. I just, it was really neat to see the dynamics of everybody who came together to pull it off on short notice, and an ever-changing, sometimes limited information coming out of the governor's office, but it all came together, and it was a lot of work on everyone's part. The second item I have this evening is, I would like, for council, I move that we approve the absence and salary of Councilor Nieper.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. That's all I have this evening.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I'd like to get further clarification on something that Councilor Glenn mentioned before. My phone is inundated with phone calls. On this towing, I thought we had a city contract, and I'm just puzzled by someone coming in and towing cars based on a phone call. And I don't know who to look at, either the chief, Barton, or the law director on what's occurring here.
Chief, you drew the short straw. You stood up first.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to say, quite frankly, I have no idea what Mr. Glenn's talking about with the cars being towed. We do have a contract with Armies.
Okay.
And also, we have very set procedures that we have to follow. I don't know, perhaps maybe it was something where the actual vehicle owners had given permission for the cars to be towed away, but it was not anything that was done through the police department.
Okay. All right.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
Yes, if it's on private property, you need anybody you want to tow your car away, am I right?
If it's your car.
Yeah, sure. I mean, it's no problem.
If, if it's your own vehicle, but again, if these were ones that were abandoned, or that, again, I don't have enough information to work with.
Right, right. And I'm going to clear it out, if it's, no matter what, I'm going to get it cleared out of it, because we have so many people continue complaining about the house, and then to go through the procedure need to go through to get the car junk auto guy out there to take care of it, it's A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and you might have to wait a week to get it done, and these folks is continue complaining about it, and I'm getting the phone calls when they already going to do something about it. And, and, and so sometimes you got to take what your constituents want done, and, and like I said, if any legal way in it, the folks that had a problem with it getting off their property, so. I'm going to tell them to take care of it.
Mr. Glenn, you're, with all due respect, you're confusing the issue.
No.
Are you saying that? I just want to clarify then. You are saying that the people who own the cars are having them towed themselves off of their property?
Let me explain it to you real quick. What, what the deal is, though, we have these cars in the area on these people's property, and they continue, it was on another person's property from another person, and they said, well, do what you got to do to get it off my property.
Who said do that?
These the people, the neighbors. So, this thing got nothing to do with coming in the alley, taking property of a car, junk car in the alley. Now, we know the procedure, we got to call the junk car dealer, junk car auto dealer, the officer to take care of that problem, okay? But this on private property, we can take care of those, that permission from the people, saying we can take it. Okay? I mean, so what I'm saying, that if it's on private property, if it on private property, we can take care of that problem, if that problem occur. And I, I don't think there should be discussion on it when you taking care of code enforced problem.
Except that, again, the person who owns the property where the car is sitting, and owns the car, they're the ones giving the permission to have it towed, correct?
Correct, because they, the neighbors have.
Okay, Mr. Glenn. What it sounded like, on, on three separate explanations now, is that the neighbors told the property owner that they had somebody coming in to tow the car. That's what you've, it sounded like you explained.
Well, let me explain it to you.
I don't have the right, you know, Teresa and I and you can't gang up on Tevin and tell him, this guy's coming to tow your cars, Tom, because we don't like the fact they're sitting in your yard.
No, no, we can't do that.
Tom has to give that permission.
Fine, Tom got to give a permission, now I won't go on the property and get it at all, that's why he's supposed to report it to the junk car dealer if they have a problem with it. But I'm there to help the peoples in my ward, to say, if you got a problem with your cars on that, in that area, we going to take care of it.
Okay, I simply would caution you to make sure that you're following the law, and that what you're doing is reviewed by the law.
Well, I think I've been at this level enough to know that.
Well, your explanation sometimes just casts doubt.
Well, if you take it the wrong way, that's what it's for. I mean, if you take it the wrong way, but I'm taking the right way when it comes down to taking care of problems in our ward, and we're not going to allow junk cars in the area, we going to take care of it.
That's commendable, I just don't want you to find yourself in trouble.